Can't miss that.
Yeah, I woke him up last night, so.
How was that, Mr. Chair?
Okay, excellent. All right, I would like to go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Genoa Township, Charter Township Board for October twentieth, twenty twenty-five, to order at six thirty P. M. I would ask you please rise and join me for the invocation. Heavenly Father, thank you for the glorious extended fall season we are enjoying, as well as recent positive developments of peace in our world. Please grant us a generous spirit that we may share our blessings with those in need. Show us the way to help those who are struggling and grant us the wisdom to help guide them to your light. We ask that you fill tonight's meeting and everyone observing it with positivity, wisdom, and grace. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, may I get a roll call, please?
Uh, Walker.
Here.
Driver.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Spyher.
Here.
Deaton here, Susie.
Here.
Hovarder.
Here.
Okay, and we have our manager Kelly Van Martyr down there at the end.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi. Am I supposed to call her on roll call?
No, you don't have to. Just, just an outside, nope.
I didn't mean to leave you out.
I'm fine.
Uh, and with that, I would like to open the call to the public at six thirty-one P. M.
Do I still have to do the whole Jeff Deheanens five four nine four sharp drive?
You did it.
Perfect. All right, I have four things. I will try to go as quick as I can. Uh, how about them Highlanders? That was so fun to watch them on Friday night and see them on real TV. That was enjoyable. Congrats on a year. Uh, I, I appreciate that you guys stepped up and, and have been serving for a year. It's been a full year, but it's also time to not be the new guys and the newbies. You are now got a year of veteraness behind you. So, congrats. I do appreciate that we are finally at the master plan. But I guess my point to that is this. Uh, I love this community, absolutely love it. I am glad that you joined into it. And I do not want to ever come across as someone who's hoarding our community. I want to welcome other people into it. One of the side effects of doing the master plan is now putting on this moratorium. And I, and I think of things like Hobby Lobby, which took three-plus years of negotiations back and forth with Planning Commission. All those projects take small, little tweaks to zoning, little tweaks to planning. And now we've put a year, a year and a half moratorium on zoning changes. I, I just think it's the wrong message when we're trying to fill the Grand River Corridor, when we're trying to do other things that, now because of the master plan, we have to stop on some progress that might be in, in, in the works. But also, I, I as a developer might avoid the township for the next eighteen months. And I think it just goes without saying. Cause you think about it, thirty years ago, probably the people at, uh, Burrows were upset. And now we have a point. Thirty years, thirty-five years later, no one's the wiser about it. I just think things like that, the moratorium kinda puts a hindrance on it. But it's a necessary evil. It happens because of the way we're doing the master plan. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was, thank you for having Sheriff Murphy here last week. I appreciated the conversation, but I have so many neighbors who've reached out to me to say, oh, my gosh, we better not have more. Sheriff's, uh, presence in the county. Uh, we, we got enough of Deputy Neff, the top ticket writing guy, doing his speed traps on Chilson. If we were looking for a faster presence, for police presence, there's different ways to do it. It could be through public safety. It could be working more with Brighton Fire Authority to say, hey, how about you guys roll cars instead of a full ladder truck every time we have a, a personal injury incident? There's other ways of doing it. I'd much rather see that than increase patrols in, in, in the township. And that is really it. I just want to get those things off my chest and, uh, I've had quite a few neighbors asking me to speak up a little bit more. And in two weeks, I am officially retired from Volkswagen, so I'll have more time to be able to join and participate in, in the community again. So, thanks.
Good for you.
And thanks on your year.
Thank you, Jeff.
Oh, that's good.
Hi, Deborah Beatty, three one zero nine Pineview Trail. Um, as for the moratorium, I know some people in the last board, uh, a lot of us thought that was speeding a little too fast. And so this moratorium will slow things down, which a lot of us want to see. As for the, um, police presence, I live off of Chilson and have for over thirty years. And I can say right now, I rarely see police officers on Chilson, uh, for a speed trap or any other reason. Uh, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Given that that's all the public we have, I will go ahead and close the call to the public at six thirty-six P. M. And with that, I would, uh, request a motion regarding the consent agenda.
I'd move approval of the consent agenda with items one and two.
Second.
All right, I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carried. I would now entertain a motion regarding the regular agenda.
I'll move to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carried. Action item number three is the consideration of a request for approval of a memorandum of understanding regarding combined sewer and water utility operational contract for the Marion Howell, Osceola, and Genoa Sewer and Water Authority, known as M-Hog, the Genoa Osceola Sewer and Water Authority, known as GIO, Howell Township, and Genoa Charter Township. And here tonight is the Utility Director, Greg Titara, to fill us in on this.
Good evening. I'll try to be quick, cause I know everybody wants to go to the lion, watch the lions here in a little bit, so. Um, so first of all, I want to thank Genoa Township, um, for all their generosity over the last fifteen years of basically backing the utility operation for all four townships and all the, uh, systems that the supervisor just mentioned. Um, I think everyone in this community has enjoyed a lot of benefits of that. Um, having equipment that we normally, any system on our own would never be able to have. Having personnel and expertise that systems on their own would never be able to have. You know, if you look at Genoa Township's two small systems of Oak Point and, um, and Lake Edgewood, there's no way that they could afford a Vector truck. There's no way they could afford, you know, the expertise of our, of our water distribution and, uh, treatment team, as well as our wastewater treatment and collections team. The equipment, the vehicles, all that is because everyone came together, uh, realized that there's a, a huge benefit of sharing. And, um, you know, and basically by pooling all the resources, it made everything more affordable for all the people in our community, which is the most important thing. I think we should try to do is provide good service as a reasonable price for our customers. So what I have before you tonight is what I think is an opportunity. So, just as a brief history lesson, you know, fifteen years ago, Genoa Township's took, basically stepped up to the plate and backed, uh, forming an in-house utility department. Up until that time, everything had been contract operations. And basically the systems were paying, um, a large amount of money to a for-profit firm. So we're taking public dollars, putting them towards a for-profit firm. And, uh, we weren't getting the best of service. I can attest to that after working for six years with the, with the private contract operations. So, in a leap of faith, the township backed everything, um, loaned us the money to buy a fleet of vehicles. Uh, you know, the township uses the township staff here to provide us, you know, payroll services and benefit services and things like that. And so after fifteen years of successful operation, uh, where I think because we finished under budget, we are not-for-profit. We've given back one point four or five million dollars, um, by being under budget for the last fifteen years. Um, as a maturation step, I think it's time for the utility department to kinda get off of Genoa Township's books, get off of Genoa Township's liability, and kinda fall under M-Hog, which is the largest, uh, system. It's forty-three percent of our budget alone, um, is to fall under M-Hog. Some of the benefits of that, I see one of the things we've always struggled with is, you know, with three other townships involved, it was always like, well, Genoa's directing too much. Genoa gets a little too much of the benefit. Um, so by being with M-Hog, it can be that every township now has a voting voice, right? We want to have each, each township have a say in, you know, pay and staff and benefits. So, uh, each township will have two voting members on M-Hog, um, that, that will do that. Um, for our customers, um, I think it'll provide a little, little more clarity for them too. You know, they always wonder like, well, how come I'm calling Genoa to talk to M-Hog? Or, uh, if we call the customers, it's like, how come my phone says Genoa when I live in Marion Township? I'm not even answering this phone call. So, um, for our customers, I think it'll provide a little, a little more clarity as well. Um, I think it would, you know, not that you guys haven't been wonderful, um, but it, it does provide a board then whose sole focus is strictly sewer and water operations, not being influenced or worried about land use decisions and things like that, because the utilities operate independent of any land use decisions, um, and, and things like that. And let's see. Um, and lastly, I think it'll help Genoa Township alleviate a little liability. You know, with twenty-eight full-time staff, thirty vehicles and a fleet driving around, big C D L, you know, sized trucks. You know, the township under its liability insurance is assuming a lot. So, by putting that under M-Hog, I think it spreads that liability out, um, equally amongst all the systems. And, uh, it takes Genoa Township a little bit off the hook. So, from a township standpoint, nothing's changing. We're all gonna stay here. We're all gonna still run Oak Point, Lake Edgewood. Um, the way the contract is gonna work basically is gonna be the exact same contract we've had for the last fifteen years. We're just gonna rearrange the order of the names of the participants is basically what's gonna happen. And it'll fall under M-Hog, um, being the, kind of the overseeing board. Um, I'm hoping that we get to stay here for a while, um, with the space for Genoa. Ultimately, we are kind of outgrowing our space here, so we will need to find something else in the near future. Um, but I think that, that's been working well. And then hopefully there's some other things we can keep sharing and stuff that make financial benefit to both organizations, be it I T, um, you know, and some of the, the other, um, human resource services and things like that, that we can both mutually benefit in shared resources as we've demonstrated over the years. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions after that brief background and, uh, and just, you know, see what you think. And then this is also just the first step. So, what this does is provides notice under the contract as we're required to do that says, hey, we're not gonna re, this thing isn't gonna automatically renew like it's done in the past. This provides a notice to not have it automatically renew. And then this board will once again get to vote, uh, most likely in January or February on the actual contract, uh, that you would fall under for operations for the, a five-year period after that.
So, question, uh, you mentioned liability. Uh, has anyone looked at what the reduction in our liability insurance will be once M-Hog's off of it?
No way to know for sure until it's actually separated.
Which would be January?
No.
It'll, it'll drop substantially. It's about, it'll be, um.
They renew in December.
December, yeah.
On December?
Oh, I thought it wasn't going to, um, change until April. I'm sorry.
So, the contract expires in April, but our insurance renewal is, is then. But M M R M A, I've already talked to them. They should be able to like transfer that over and, and remove it. Kinda like your auto insurance, you know, you pay, but then if you cancel it early, you get a refund. It'd be similar to that.
So where are you looking to get a new building?
Oh, I don't know. I mean, we've talked a lot about, we've talked about the house across the, the street there as one possibility. Um, you know, depending on cost, we've talked about the, uh, possibly building something in front of our GIO plant. We've talked about renting something, but rental, I'm not too excited about because I, I don't want to be in a position to spend a bunch of money to rehab a place. And then also, you know, once we do move, I'm hopefully we, our customers get to know where we are and we're not changing, changing locations. So, a couple of things we're kicking around is possibly building something new or, um, renovating the building across the street. Um, right now, M-Hog's in the middle of a ten million dollar water main construction project. Uh, we have a couple of change orders coming up because we ran into some bad soil. So, I kinda don't want to do anything until that project's wrapped up and we know financially where we stand. And then, you know, how much C I P money is available and things like that for, for them to, to invest in a, in a building. So, for right now, I'd kinda just rather just keep on keeping on for a little bit if it's okay with you all. And then, uh, we can look for something once we, once, you know, one thing at a time, right? So, um, you know, let's, let's get a new contract. Let's get that going. Let's get up and running. Um, and then down the road, we can look to, to move because, you know, trying to bite off everything at one time might set us up for failure. So I'd rather just keep moving stepwise.
Would you be looking for, uh, Genoa Township as a, as a most preferred location?
Um, yeah, I think ideally, like, I'd like something, you know, somewhat centrally located for all four of our cus, you know, town, um, customers. Um, you know, so there's certain advantages, like this is a great location because historically, customers for the last thirty years have paid their bills here, right? So, uh, they might come in here and pay their bill while for, you know, or if they have a question on their bill, we're right across the street, right? So, from that standpoint, it'd be, it'd be really good. Although I also see it'd be nice to be on, like, be on M-Hog Water or something and GIO Sewer, as our customers, right? That we're actually on the sewer system, uh, and water system. You know, it's nice if somebody calls you and says, my water tastes terrible. Well, gee, I'm having a glass right now and it tastes fine to me, like, you know, so, um.
I'd like to keep them relatively close to the township because customers will still pay their bills at Genoa Township. Because the D P W, they cannot bill and collect. There's gotta be that.
Their segregation of duties we have to do is gonna be my question.
Yeah, so I like the fact currently, and for years, I've been, we'll take the money and when there's questions, they just walk to the other counter. You know, if they were to consider rehabbing the old farmhouse here, I could just send customers right over there.
With online bill payment and stuff though, we're seeing our counter traffic and personal payments and in-person dropping. You know, people can go online now on a website and pay with credit card. They can set up an A C H account and have their bill automatically drawn from their checking. So, we've seen that aspect go a lot, you know, down, decrease substantially over years.
And honestly, it's no different than someone coming here for a land use permit and then having to drive off and go to the county for the building permit. So, kinda the same concept, so if you're not right here, I'm sure people will adjust to it. Um, I'd just add, as the representative for Genoa Township on both M-Hog and GIO, I've already voted on this twice to approve it. Uh, I think it's a, a great idea. Uh, we've outgrown the way we've been doing it. It was a wonderful thing fifteen years ago. I think it's one of the best things Genoa Township ever did. Cause like you said, we were contracting out for these services and it was very costly. And they didn't do nearly the good job that we're, we're getting today.
Yeah, there's something to be said when your employees are living in your same community, you know, they care. It's their sewer, it's their water. You know, we have our, a lot of our employees live right here in, you know, the four township area. And most of them live, I think all but three of our employees live in Livingston County, which is pretty amazing, given, you know, the price. So, we, we do, and we love that they participate in, you know, a lot of the community things here. They're, they're coaches in our community. They, and that's the kinda thing we love to have, you know, that's what, that's what builds a successful team, is that our staff's invested in the community. They want to see it succeed, you know?
You had mentioned that you, uh, you're in the middle of that t, uh, ten million dollar project. When are you looking to that to be wrapped up?
Uh, hopefully around, um, about the same time, like March thirty-first.
Oh.
We should be done with Division A of that project by the end of this year. And, um, we have, uh, we have an easement restriction on the D N R property that we're crossing. That now says because of hunting season, we can't be on there from October one to January one. So, we have to finish a portion there, so we can't come back until, um, after January. And given the weather questions and stuff, you know, I want to give ourselves plenty of, plenty of time for that.
Okay.
Greg, have all the other communities already seen this agreement?
Yeah, so I should've sorta said that, yeah. Uh, Genoa's the last one and that's only, no reason other than the way the board meetings fell, right? So Howell Township had the first board meeting. They approved it first. Uh, last Wednesday was GIO and M-Hog. They both approved it. So, uh, this Monday, Genoa Township's kind of the last, the last board meeting, um, that we have. So all the other communities participating in this have, have agreed to it already. And again, this is strictly just kinda providing that notice in place that, you know, this is the way we're looking to go. And it, it sort of doesn't allow, cause otherwise we got to December, end of December, that contract would automatically renew. And then we'd all be waiting for another year, so.
Okay. Any further questions? With that, uh, I would entertain a motion on action item number three.
I make a motion to approve action item number three as written. Second.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a support. Um, any further questions? I would ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carried.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
And go Lions.
Thanks, Greg. Excellent work. Okay, moving on. Member updates. Any member boards have any meetings?
Um, Z B A is not meeting tomorrow. We have nothing on the agenda this month, so.
Anything from Howell Parks and Rec?
We meet tomorrow, but they had their Legends of Sleepy Howell Saturday, which is probably not great, cause of the rain. You know, they run and they have trick-or-treating and stuff like that.
Yeah, the weather definitely didn't cooperate, did it?
I know, I know, but it wasn't cold, but it was ugly. So I, I don't know how that went. I'll hear it tomorrow.
Anything exciting from Planning Commission or B A F A?
We did not have a, a meeting last week.
Okay.
Rick alluded to that we've got nothing, nothing in the Pike, like, now.
B A F A, um, last meeting, the highlights were kinda discussing the, um, upcoming, um, Halloween open house, like the fall open house that they do every year. And that was pretty much the highlights of the meeting.
Has the construction started on the building?
No.
When's that?
That will be the last event there.
They've already moved out all the, all the staff, the.
The current things out, finding all the stuff in the back of the junk drawers that, you know, from years past.
It's like, where's Mike's office now? See which ones he.
They are, uh, at the corner of, uh, Heine and Oak Twenty-three.
Mm, okay.
In the Brighton Township Station.
Interesting.
Thirty-two is it? Um, okay.
Member updates. Uh, any board comments?
Yeah, I've got one. Um, so S E N C O G does a, a program each year called Safe Streets Campaign in the fall. And, um, I took it upon myself to order a bunch of the, um, pamphlets and extra goodies that we're gonna have displayed out here for people to pick up. Um, these are for the kids, for armbands and, um, they're all light-up stuff. It's like these here, they can put it on their, uh, on their bikes or their arm or backpack or whatever. And so these are gonna be available, um, as soon as they kick it off, which I think is it today. I think it was the day they were supposed to be kicking off. So we're gonna be putting that material out for them.
Okay, here at the hall?
Yep.
Is it something for people to purchase?
No, it's pick-free. It's free. And if we run out, we can get more. But, um, I bought, I not bought, I acquired fifty of each of these things for, for, so we got a hundred and fifty safety issues, uh, things for the kids for, um, for Safe Streets.
Thank you for doing that.
Excellent. Thank you for that.
I have a question. Um, just this, um, Saturday, the same day as Sleepy Hollow, my church did trunk-or-treat. And I know there were some communities around here, other buildings and stuff did trunk-or-treat. Uh, has there ever been a trunk-or-cheat here at the Township Hall?
Not that I'm aware of.
Got plenty of parking.
The fire feels that they may be, people may be tiring of trunk, by the time Halloween gets, they've done so much trunk-or-treat.
Yeah, it could be.
They don't do any more trick-or-treat.
Well, it'll, too.
We're gonna make them work for it, like we had to. Um, I did want to address just real quick, the, so the moratorium is only on, uh, zoning changes. And, uh, special use permits and things of that ilk. Uh, and we just feel that this is gonna be a pretty big, uh, we're gonna get a ton of input for the master plan. Uh, I wouldn't say that I know exactly how it's gonna turn out, but I think we would be remiss to stick with the current plan and, and implement it if somehow, uh, the surveys come back and the, the projects and the plan ends up being drastically different. Uh, I don't think it's a lot to ask people to wait. Uh, there's no guarantee it'll be a full twelve months. We'll, we'll see when the plan is done.
I think the biggest word in what you're trying to say is new.
Right. It doesn't affect anything that's already.
Anything already in the works can keep on working.
Yep.
And the board has the right to cancel the moratorium.
We do.
We can suspend it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the key, the key here is it's not everything. It's just rezoning.
It's just zoning changes.
Absolutely.
And people need to be reminded that the questionnaire is out there now.
Do, yeah, do we have any preliminary, uh, like how many responses we've had so far?
I asked that question.
And?
And the answer is, we don't have access to it right now.
Just right now. I just clicked it open.
So, the survey is hosted by Giffles Webster, who's our consultant.
Okay.
Um, using their Survey Monkey account, so I'm, I'm gonna have to get in touch with them and ask them to give me, um,
That's on the results.
Uh, live updates or whatever.
Yeah.
Need Billy check in on it.
We'll try to keep people updated.
Mine, yeah.
Do you have any, uh, Kelly, any idea how many people signed up for CPR?
So, I'm gonna owe you that information as well. I know last week, um, Kathleen was off. She needs to log in and give me that number. She was also off today. So tomorrow morning, um, I intend to send an email with an update on who signed up for CPR, um, the Coffee with a Cop workshop. And then I'll try to get a survey number two.
Which is the perfect opportunity just to remind everybody that, uh, one week from tonight, October twenty-seventh, right here in the boardroom, will, from six o'clock until ten, uh, will be CPR and A E D training, uh, presented by the sheriff. Um, and then next Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, also right here, uh, nine thirty A M to eleven thirty A M is Coffee with a Cop, where you can come in and ask a police officer. It'll be a sheriff's deputy. Can ask him anything you want about anything. Hopefully mostly law enforcement related, but I'm sure they'll give you other questions too. And then, uh, yeah, as you've hopefully heard, the Genoa Township Master Plan Survey is live. Easiest way to get there is to go to genoa.org and right under latest township news, uh, first or second thing you'll see is a link to the survey, which is hosted on Survey Monkey. Um, there's also a way to go to the Giffles Webster Genoa Project site to get there. Um, and we will have hard copies here at the hall, uh, at all times. If anyone wants to do it the good old-fashioned way and fill it out with pen and paper, you're welcome to do that. Uh, just swing by and grab some copies. And we'll, we'll be out and about with some of that stuff, trying to, uh, make sure we get to our goal of two thousand feedbacks. Um, and then finally, there is a special meeting on Wednesday, October twenty-second, two days from now, right here in the, in the boardroom.
November first. Um, we have, we have also November first, the, um, lead, leaf cleanup, the yard waste cleanup here at the Township Hall. And, uh,
Big Red Barrel.
Big Red Barrel will be here, taking, um, prescription drugs that you don't want and, uh, needles, sharps.
They're doing sharps that night, too?
Yes.
Excellent.
But you have to put them in a, like a, a, like a Tupperware container, so that nobody gets hurt.
Okay.
Stabbed with the, the sharps.
We'll have to have Kathleen post. We'll have to have Kathleen post the Big Red Barrel this time, I think last time we didn't post soon enough, so I don't think a lot of people knew, still had a pretty good turnout, but even better if we push it a little bit more.
Yep.
Most pharmacies do sell sharps containers, so you can have like a proper sharps container for disposal.
Okay, she also said like a, like an old, like a laundry detergent container, or...
Like a Tide Jug or something.
Yeah, or like a dishwasher one, or just something, you know, so, yeah, but the proper one would be better, that way it doesn't, full laundry soap.
Excellent. All right, well, given that there's one minute until kickoff, I would actually entertain a motion.
I just wanted to make one comment, time on that. I just wanted to give you a heads up for the next meeting, I've been working with folks in the Forest View subdivision, which is south of Brighton Road, it includes Timberline, Old Hickory, Forest View Court, and Tulloch Way on a special assessment district. I checked today, they're just over sixty percent support from the petition initiative, so I expect to be putting that on the next agenda, and I just wanted the board to be aware of it.
Oh, good.
Thank you.
Excellent.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carried, we are adjourned.
Let the chief go.
Thanks, everybody.